I'm calling to order this regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation and Park District at 6:30 PM. Could we have the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Well, I want to quickly introduce a member of the community who I've been, I've had the privilege of working with the last two years. She brought the grant to the City Council, the successful grant for the Sun River Park Horse Project. She's been the Sun River Neighborhood Volunteer Coordinator for the past 10 years. This has included bringing Santa in the park, organizing caroling in that park, the spring Easter egg hunts, movies to Sun River Park, and their summer neighborhood yard sale. They've also, she's also been the Sun River Parkway Liaison for the American River Parkway Coalition. She volunteers at the eye surgery center in Rancho Cordova. She volunteers with canine rescue. And she's also been organizing for the last seven years, hosting a national night out event. This is Pam Britton, and she has a few words she'd like to share with you about Sun River Neighborhood.
You don't need to do the pledge first?
After the pledge.
Okay. So, I just... Pledge. I have pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for First of all, thank you all for having me. It's an honor and a pleasure to be here. I'll be quick. The Sun River Neighborhood Association began in the year 2000. It was started by Troy and Heidi Karnowski when their home had been broken into. They felt that they needed to have a group of people to talk about what had happened and see if they could make the neighborhood a little more safe. They started having a few meetings, and lo and behold, the meetings got bigger and bigger, and everyone was pretty interested in continuing with them. So, the four people came together, and it was Troy Karnowski, Ray Fox, Craig Osborne, and the late Carl Steiner. And they were the, they were the people that began the first Sun River Neighborhood Association Steering Committee. They soon realized that all of the Sun River neighbors needed to be included in their meetings, but the question was how to get them there. And they soon realized that Ray Fox had some technical abilities, and he went to work designing and building the neighborhood e-group. It was designed to allow neighbors to communicate with each other daily. And this is the website we still use today to communicate with events, check in with each other. We ask, we ask advice, or we need referrals for help, or neighborhood alerts. Our Neighborhood Association hasn't changed much since then. We have a volunteer steering committee of six of us. Rob Towns is our e-group moderator, and he keeps all of us, all others online, kind of in line and kind with each other. We have Sandy Kurjak, and she's Rob's assistant. Ginger Enrico is our American River Parkway Liaison. She and I do that together. Deanne Sherman is our Sentinel Newsletter Editor and Designer. And I'm the Events Director now. I've gone from volunteer coordinator to the head position, so to speak, of being Events Director. The past year, I took over this position from Jessica Archanasek. She's been our Events Director since 2003. She retired in the summer of 2016, and she had, a big portion of her life was dedicated for the past 13 years to the Sun River Neighborhood Association. So, where are we now? Four of our six steering committee members have been on the Steering Committee for the past 10 years. When Jessica retired last year, I stepped into her very big shoes to fill as the new Events Director. We meet once a month with activity, to plan activities and discuss our ongoing topics that are going on in the neighborhood. Three times a year, we have a neighborhood meeting with guest speakers from our community. Each year, we have several activities that Christina just let you know about. We start our year in, sort of in March, when we have our newsletter that's delivered. We have a neighborhood meeting in March, and we have three of those a year. April, we have our spring egg hunt. We put out 400 eggs in Sun River Park for about 100 little kids, and we turn them loose to gather eggs. And the little babies, the two-years-old and under little guys, they get to go in the playground area, so we kind of separate them from the big kids, so they have a chance. It's a hot dogs and hamburgers day, and Chick-fil-A has always donated sandwiches to us. This year, we had over 200 children and parents, so we're getting bigger. Come in July, we have another Sentinel delivery. Our August is a big month for us. We have another neighborhood meeting. We're having a movie in the park. We do this every year with dinner. Sometimes it's a Hawaiian theme, sometimes it's another theme, but this year, it's going to be a Hawaiian theme. And we're partnering with Sun River Church this year, so their congregation is going to participate with us. We're kind of infolding each other into our groups. They wanted to, to do that with us. So, we're planning, that's in the planning stages right now for the first part of August. We're going to have an August neighborhood yard sale, and then we're kind of off until December. And in December, we have Santa in the park, and Santa's my husband. He arrives at Sun River Park on the back of a fire engine, which is from Engine Company 65, and he's been doing this for about the last 10 years. And he does this, he sees about 75 kids come sit on his lap and give him their Christmas wishes, and we serve cookies and hot chocolate, and we're all freezing out there, but it's a wonderful day. We do caroling in the park week after that, and our last event of the year is our holiday party for, for the, for the adults, actually. And this is a fun time, because we've been collecting toys for the last few weeks at this time, and then it culminates at the party. We gather all the toys together, and we donate them to PALS, which is the Police Activity League for Kids. We donate to their toy drive, and we've been doing that for the last few years. We write and publish a neighborhood newsletter called the Sun River Sentinel, and you're going to be getting two copies of that. We're sending that around. For the delivery of the Sentinel, Sun River is divided into 17 routes, and three times a year, 17 volunteers deliver Sentinels throughout our neighborhood of 600 people. The past year, we've had a special opportunity to partner with the city of Rancho Cordova, SMUD, and Sacramento Tree Foundation to be part of the Neighbor Woods Initiative. Steve Harriman, Gordon Mann, and Matt Von Dancel spearheaded the city's and the tree foundation's involvement with the digging of the planting holes, arranging of the volunteers, and the free planting of trees throughout Sun River, Sun River Park, and this year, they did a big planting at Sun River Church. Our Shining Star event this year was the dedication of our outdoor physical fitness park course in Sun River, which has earned the prestigious award of being a national demonstration site for outdoor fitness. The park horse came about through a community enhancement grant and a year and a half of support and efforts from the city and CRPD. Thank you to Stacy Delaney, who's our Community Enhancement Analyst, Christina James, CRPD Park Planner, and of our course, and for all the people that are helping us with our goodies and our volunteers at our park events. Our park dedication happened this year. We had, had about 45 people out in the pouring rain, and we don't know why they all came, but they all came and helped with planting of trees, spreading of the bark in the playground area, and all the city, our city officials came out and were there. So, it was, it was a wonderful, fun event. We put off the painting of the bollards. That's going to happen this coming Saturday. We're quite an involved group and dedicated group of neighbors who volunteer time and efforts to make Sun River a wonderful place to live. And I'd like to thank you, the Park District and the Board, for all your support in beautifying our neighborhood and Sun River Park. I've also been asked to thank the Board, and maybe not the Board, but other, other people unnamed and unknown by me, for providing the doggy bags for Sun River Park, which helped keep our park clean. So, thank you very much for whoever was responsible for that. So, come out Saturday, we're going to put our volunteers to work early. We're going to try 8 o'clock, and we're going to do painting and hopefully be done pretty quickly. So, thank you again for having me.
I'm a little troubled by one thing that you said.
Oh, dear.
You said, "Your husband is Santa Claus?" Just, can you clarify that, because there might be some young kids watching this video tape, and I don't want them to get confused.
Santa Claus is an integral part of our neighborhood activities at Christmas, and we hope that every child that's watching this will come and visit and give Santa your wishes for Christmas.
Okay, thank you.
Pam, I would just like to state on behalf of the Board that your Neighborhood Association is fabulous. The work you do is wonderful. More people should emulate it. It's, it's, we really appreciate that in our district.
Thank you. And we thank you for your support. I mean, you guys have been awesome, and we do appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
It's a fun group of people to work with, so it kind of goes around and comes around. Thank you.
Thank you. So, now, roll call, please.
Director Sloan.
Here.
Director Dancel.
Here.
Secretary Yearwood.
Here.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Here.
And Chair Lineback.
Here.
Is the time on our agenda for Board disclosures on action items? Does anybody have anything they would like to disclose? Okay, so we will move on to Item B, comments by the public on non-agenda items.
Thank you, Chair Lineback. Members of the public may address the Board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It is a violation of state law for the Board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff, and I have several speaker cards. I'd like to call first to the podium Angel Ball. Following Angel will be Greg Ball.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and CRPD Board. Patrick, the reason, I'm sorry, my name is Angel Ball. I live in the city of Rancho Cordova, and as you know, my neighborhood has Fetterfield Park in it, and we've talked a lot about Fetterfield Park and between... I'm here tonight to thank Patrick for his vision of Fetterfield Park, his care and concern for the park that is right down the street from my house. It's not perfect, but you know, maybe it will be at some point. I feel the neighborhood is a little safer. I also want to thank Michael for taking the time to sit in my park one evening, for I believe you guys were out there at least two and a half hours. Thank God, it wasn't 106, but you...
You would have been in that pool.
You actually just got to sit there and absorb kind of what goes on, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. And the last thing that is most important is the actual removal of the horseshoe pits that I believe, I know, I don't believe, I know, was causing some of the activity that was not welcome in our neighborhood. So, I wanted you all to know that, and I sincerely thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call to the podium Greg Ball. Following Greg will be Bonnie Dominey.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members. Patrick, District Administrator, et al. up here. I wanted to come up here tonight to second the gratitude, the thanks and the gratitude we have for you taking the time and listening to us on an issue that we have been dealing with for three years. And so, we'll celebrate the success of that, and with the removal of the pits, the subsequent activities that were going on on a, pretty much many times a week basis, have all but subsided. So, I would say that 90% of the problem is gone, if you, you know, just for some kind of a mathematical idea. Now, with the remaining percentages there, what we have are street people that make their way into the park and are camping or staying there, doing their best to stay overnight. And what we found out is that it's kind of the park by day, and we observe them, because I want to explain, the other issue is with that out of the way, now we can see other people that are there, different people, and kind of floating in and out over the last three weeks. But we see them make the great migration at the end of the day, where they go from Fetterfield Park across the street to Cordova Elementary. So, we attended the Rancho Cordova Police Department meeting last Wednesday night and discussed this with them, and Officer Moya said that it is an issue where the school district will need some Knox boxes, and they need to cut off their free Wi-Fi that's there, as well as the electrical outlets that allow people to recharge their cell phones, that that is part of the encouragement. So, as fate would have it, the very next night, found my wife and myself up speaking to the Folsom-Cordova School Board and addressed them and let them know of the situation at their school, and that you, in fact, have done, are doing your part with us, and now we need them to start picking up their end. So, to that end, what I want to do is give you a heads up that one of the comments back to us at the end of the thing, where we were very complimentary about the results and the help we've received from the Park District, that they would be adding this to a two-by-two meeting that they have with you. And so, I want you guys to know that that's coming, and, and again, we, we thank you. Progress is being made, and, and I think that's what it's really about, so.
Next, I'd like to call to the podium Bonnie Dominey. Following Bonnie will be Carol Kraus.
Hi, Board, Staff. Always a big fan. As you know, I'm on the PMRID Oversight Committee, and as we come into budget season again, one of the things that is always on my mind, and I wanted to put it on record this time, is that as part of the PMRID, I believe we should have a meeting prior to the budget approval, so that we can actually provide some input into the budget before it gets to the point where you are voting on it. I think the process of waiting until after isn't very helpful overall for the community. So, I just wanted to put that on record, but I think that the budget has always been a problem, because we've been struggling to make ends meet, and so, while we may not be able to make much of a difference, we would still like to have the opportunity to have some input before. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call to the podium Carol Kraus. Following Carol will be Joyce Higdon.
Good evening, Board. It looks like it's a little bit of a quieter situation it was at your special meeting. So, exciting. So, I'm here again just to restate my opinion on just, you know, you guys, it sounds like we had a great budget meeting earlier. I wasn't able to attend, but from what I've been told, you have funds allocated for the pool, and so, it's just a reminder that, you know, we've been waiting, and we want that to stay at the forefront, because it's so frustrating, not having control of when we can practice, when, whether or not the pool gets closed and things like that, and sorry. It's been a really frustrating year for us this year, and I just would like to be able to be in our own pool where that stops. And again, I have nothing against the shooting center. I just believe that option one, just to renew the lease, that lease is not in our best interest for the CRPD or, you know, for the community. I don't have a problem if you take option two, and you want to look at putting out an RFP and have it stated in there that if it's going to stay as a shooting center, that they are responsibility, responsible for making those safety and ADA upgrades, and that doesn't fall on CRPD's responsibility. Or number three, you don't, you don't do anything with it at all. You look at other options, and hey, a Phoenix field would do a lot of great things for youth sports organizations for Rancho, like the RCSC and the RCA, I'm sorry, RCLL, the Little League fields. I mean, if we look at a Phoenix field, that also has vernal pools out there. They have a great facility where a lot of youth get to enjoy that facility. So, you know, keep the pool in mind, and I hope to hear great things, and I'm really wondering when that RFP is going to come out, so we can start moving forward, because I'd really like to have our own pools back. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call to the podium Joyce Higdon. Following Joyce will be Susan Parisio.
Good evening. I'm Joyce Higdon, and I'm here this evening, actually, on behalf of the Friends of Cordova. I wanted to take the time to thank CRPD for the increased support of our organization. Because of the recent publicity, including a mention of, in, of our, of our Board in, on Facebook and on Nextdoor, we actually had two visitors at our last meeting, one of which has submitted an application, so you'll be seeing that hopefully soon, so that you can accept one of Brian's friends. Since he's our personnel. Let's see. We're beginning to ramp up our planning for our 2018 event, which is going to be another Wine and Brew Fest this time, and I believe we had to change the date, because you, you all have something planned for the original dates. We're going to move that so that, because we know none of you would want to miss that event. And then I just wanted to thank you, because I've heard rumblings at the pool, I'm going to get emotional like Carol. I've heard rumblings that we're moving forward with the pool, and I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, because it's very important, and I'm glad that you see that. Thank you.
And the final speaker card I have this evening is for Susan Parisio.
Good evening, Board. I'm glad to see that there's some folks here. I would hope more people would have taken me up on my challenge to come to these meetings instead of just coming to a special meeting. I did a little reading on the pools and was pretty disturbed by what I found. My children are out of the house. I don't have a need for a pool any longer, and it was, it was upsetting. I would like to say that I think that the shooting range and the pool are two ends on the same frayed rope. Perhaps you all weren't responsible for the condition that they're in. You may have inherited it. Seems like it's been a long time coming. I would challenge the Board, what can you do going forward? That policy might be created, so that it cannot continue as it has. What I learned was that in 2015, with regard to the pool, Major H was passed. Prior to that, this Parks District had set aside $1.2 million to improve the Hagan Park Pool Complex. Anybody know where that money is? I'm curious. I know you can't answer me, but that's quite a few years ago, and finding out that perhaps it wasn't the Hagan, maybe it was the, the Cordova Recreation Pool, sorry, and that the Hagan Pool has been closed for how many years? Seven? Well, 2014 article said that the diving pool had already been closed. I mean, I'm just looking at the fact that monies apparently haven't been put into them at the rate that was required, and that brings me to the shooting range. I don't think that they are mutually opposing issues. The range has been there for 40 years. It was put there specifically by the Department of the Interior. That property was, was donated and then handed over to the Parks Service, and it produces a lot of money. I'm, I'm not sure the exact number, and I'm curious, and I will be looking at the budgets from the past, as to how much of that money that was generated to the Parks District went back into maintenance. I'm curious how many buildings and improvement programs have taken place in 40 years, and I'm not sure that it can be used for anything else. And I'm going to wrap up. I am not opposed to the pools. I'm 100% in favor of it, and as a taxpayer who has recently been annexed into the Rancho Cordova area, I am going to be watching to see exactly how this all shakes out, because people from our past put these in place for better communities and neighborhoods, not so that everything could be closed down, because it's somewhat inconvenient to figure out how to make it work. You have good people with these folks wanting the pools to be fixed. They're right to want it. If my kids were swimming, I'd be fighting for that, as well as the range, and I'm fighting for both. Thank you.
I received an additional card. I'd like to call to the podium Jessica Kaiser, please.
Hi, Board. I'm just here as a, you know, I've been a homeowner here in Rancho Cordova for over 10 years. My husband and I have three kids, and we are, you know, we were kind of born and raised here in the Sacramento area, so we've been familiar with the Rancho Cordova area, and over the last 10 years that we've been here, we've been excited about the changes that have, the positive changes that have taken place, and we just see the city growing in a great way, and, and as a current Marlin family member, and, and, you know, just, we really hope to see the pool be something that you focus on in the future for the city. I think it can be an amazing place for the community. Just being a part of this Marlin team over the last six years, we were there, you know, for maybe one of the last two years that Hagan Pool was open, and, and as kind of a sad place that it had grown to be over the years, the team leadership from those coaches who grew up as Marlins, who graduated from Cordova, who came back to teach the kids, their heart and soul is in that place, and their love of swimming, and just their passion for something so great is still apparent, even as we've said goodbye to the Hagan Pool and we've moved on to any pool that will, you know, make room for us. I just hope that, you know, we can continue to see these kids grow up in a great sport, as well as everyone else who uses that facility. And we have cordettes. We have the potential for a dive team, a water polo team, to keep our high schoolers close by, so that they don't need to get bust up to Folsom. I know you've heard these comments before, but I just wanted to have you see a new face, a new parent, a new family who loves being part of this community. I just, I would love to see this pool come back to be a total shining star in this city, make it just that much more of a wonderful place to attract more businesses and more families and more people. And so, I just want to share those thoughts with you guys, and, and I hope you realize there are so many more family members who are at the pool right now, who want to say the same thing, and thanks, you guys, for your time.
I have no further speaker cards.
Okay, so then we will move on to the Consent Calendar.
Thank you, Chair Lineback. Consent Calendar items are considered routine and will be acted upon in one motion without discussion. Any member of the Board, staff, or public may request an item be pulled for discussion. Any pulled items will be heard and acted upon individually, and this evening, we have nine items for your consideration.
Are there any items to be pulled from the Consent Agenda?
I would like to pull Item C2 for a separate vote, please.
Chair Lineback, I would like to pull C5, hold on a second, C6, which is the Engineers' Report for PMRID. Thank you.
I would like to pull... I would like to pull Item C3, as usual, the District Financial Report, just for a little question. So, can I have a motion on Items C1, C4, 5, 7, 8, and 9?
I'll move that we approve Consent Calendar Item C1, C4, C5, C7, C8, and C9.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes.
I'll second.
Thank you, Secretary Yearwood, and a roll call vote, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Dancel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Chair Lineback.
Aye.
So, Item C2 is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Directors from May 17th, and we are requesting that Secretary Yearwood abstain due to his absence at the meeting.
Chair Lineback, I'd like to make a motion to approve Item C2, to approve the minutes from the regular Board meeting of 5/17/2017.
Thank you, Director Dancel, for your motion, and Director Sloan, for your second. Roll call, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Dancel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Abstain.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Chair Lineback.
Aye. And then I had a brief question on the financial report. I feel like I should have seen this before, but there's an item here that wasn't in the budget. budget, and has shown expenses year-to-date of $73,625 in its salaries and wages to outside agencies. Could I just get a brief explanation of what that is?
Yeah, I can answer that.
I'm sorry, this is page 23 for...
Thank you.
MacAdell Finance Manager, correct. So we don't budget for outside agencies, it's, what we use that for is a temporary gap in between hiring, so if we need to hire someone on a, we use express employment, they're a temporary agency, and they offer a PM1s, they offer clerical, account temps, all kinds of staff that we need. So if we lose somebody, and we need to hire someone, but that process, you know, has to go through a panel, and it could take a month or two months, we use that. The reason why it's so bulky, it's $73,000, I believe, we use mechanics for that spot, so we weren't prepared to go out for a new mechanic yet, we're using the one that we had through Express. And my only concern with the Parks Services is, I combine it with the budget that we have for part-time. So as long as the combination of part-time and that outside agency account that you're looking at, as long as together, they're not going over budget, that's my only concern. And so, we did have a mechanic in part-time budgeted, but zero cost coming out of the part-time, it was coming out of the express employment for the outside agency for that $73,000.
If I can be a little bit technical, the $1,000, are they not for salaries paid by the district? Wouldn't that be in a different...
I thought they would be coded that way, too, but that's not how the county handles temporary employment. I thought it'd go into other professional services, or something specific, and actually, no, there's an account for that, which is that one, that 110 account.
Interesting, yeah. And just a brief question about the contracted security services, because it's gone over budget by just about $20,000, and I thought we had a fixed contract for our security.
We did, it was a $77,000 contract, so I think we had an $80,000 budget, if I'm not mistaken. And we've actually had a need for further security, for CRPD purposes, for a threat, and then also some homeowners in specific areas were having issues, and so we had to increase the security for our parks for that specific purpose, so it did go over budget. I talked to Jerry Dobbs, our Parks Superintendent, about it, and he said, "Well, we need the security, and that's a major component to what they do," and I agreed, safety first, and as long as overall in his 20s park budget, he wasn't going over, he was monitoring that, so we allowed that to happen, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So if I could have a motion on Item C3?
I'll move that we, what am I trying to think of? Approve, thank you. Consent Calendar Item C3.
Thank you Secretary Yearwood, and thank you Vice Chair Reyes. A roll call, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Danzel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Chair Leinbach.
Aye.
Okay, for C6, I believe, just of maybe more education knowledge here, Mr. Goodell, I'm just looking, and I'm trying to understand, we do have a part here that they, that is for uncollectible, $30,000, right? And this is with the PMRID assessments, right? Special assessment, and that's the $26 or something a year, right? For 25 something, and it's going to be 26 or...
Yeah, it was 25, 29 per year, it's 2605 this year.
Okay, so why, why do, what is this uncollectible? Is this plain and simple, people that will not pay into it, or not at all?
So we have different plans set up through how these CFDs and these LNLs are set up, they're all done differently, and how we handle it through the county. And so, we have the county either collect the full amount that is actually paid, and there's some people don't pay their property tax bills, right? And so those people are considered the uncollectible. Now, when they eventually pay with penalties and interest, we receive that, and that's how it's treated in the PMRID fund. So when they eventually go after them, and they pay that fee, we get it back, plus interest and penalty. So we'll get these staggered payments later on in the year, like around June, July, the random payments that are part of that collection. So we could eventually see some of that, but sometimes it's been averaging about $30,000 uncollectible for the year. Now, other CFDs that we have in LNLs, they're on this thing called a teeter plan, and that means that we get guaranteed a specific amount of money, but if they end up paying people that, down the road, that the county, or whatever agency, gets the interest, gets the penalties, gets all the fees. But they're, but we're guaranteed a set payment if we go through this thing called the teeter plan. Again, I wasn't here when all these were set up, they're all completely different, it's kind of interesting and fascinating, but, yeah, so that's what's going on. So for PMRID specifically, we have to have an uncollectible portion that we just anticipate not collecting.
Okay, thank you. I also wanted to try and understand the, in this Engineers' Report, which was probably one of the clarifications that we were talking about at the budget workshop, because it says here, the 19, on page seven of the Engineers' Report, it says, "The 1972 Act requires that special fund be set up," which is what we have, for the revenues and expenditures. The last sentence, second to the last sentence goes, "A contribution by the district may be made to reduce assessments," right? "As the Board of Directors deem appropriate, any balance remaining on July 1 must be carried over to the next fiscal year, unless the funds are being accumulated for future capital improvements and operating reserves." So I'm trying to understand that, because he just says "any balance," are we talking about if the, if the district were to, does the district contribute prior to all the expenses, or the, is the district supposed to contribute after, let's just say, the money's collected, can't, doesn't pay for the expenses?
Yeah, and PMRID, it's been an area where, you know, it's $25 per house, so there's not a whole lot of collection of funds there to support and maintain that area, which is why we went after Measure J. And...
So the balance must be carried...
Right, right, so if there's any leftover fund balance at the end, so if we have more revenue versus what we spent in expenses, correct, and that is a fund balance that we carry over year-to-year, that can be used in addition as capital improvements for the following year, or for part of enhanced operations. But that specific fund, PMRID, it's just, it's just not enough money to have a fund balance carried over a year. I mean, we zone it out, and it's literally just a few thousand dollars in both, in all three areas, and so it's used up by the end of the year, so there isn't small to none fund balance in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so if I could have a motion, please, on Item C6?
I'll go ahead.
I'll make the motion that we approve Item C6 on the consent calendar.
Thank you Director Sloan.
Second.
Second, thank you Vice Chair Reyes. Roll call, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Danzel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Chair Leinbach.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Now we will move on to Item D, Special Items. D1, Ceremonial Recognition of Park and Recreation Month.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members. I am very pleased to welcome some special guests today in honor of National Park and Recreation Month, which will commence on July 1. And we ourselves in the district will also be celebrating, thank you for passing the resolution, and will commence our celebration, or conclude our celebration, at our Party in the Park event on Friday, July 21. I would first like to welcome Jonathan Glass with the Office of Assemblyman Ken Cooley.
Good evening Chair and Board. On behalf of Assemblymember Ken Cooley, I'd like to thank the Park Districts for all they do for the citizens of our community, and I'd like to present a Certificate of Recognition on behalf of Assemblymember Cooley. It states, "The California Legislature Assembly Certificate of Recognition, presented to Cordova Recreation and Park District. In recognition of your improvements to our quality of life through services and activities you provide to the citizens and guests of Rancho Cordova, in honor of National Park and Recreation Month. Signed, Assemblymember Cooley." So, that's all, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
If I could ask the Board to come down, please to take a picture. The representative from Almira's office is not here yet, so when he arrives, then we'll do it again.
I brought some pants real fast. You like a little bit of that, back up on? Nice pants.
Wonderful, thank you.
I tried to add airbrush.
Oh gosh, so we should have...
Parks and Rack. Now, we will move on to Item E, Committee Reports. We had Standing Committee School District 2x2, Director Yearwood and Sloan, may I have your report?
Yes, we met on June 8, 9:00 AM, and one of the first things on the agenda was talking about the kiosk, the Hagan Red Barn Improvement Project, and talking about some type of ground opening that possibly could be in September for that event. Right now, they're in the process of looking into possibly getting some students to help paint the barn, and, but they need to probably find times where it won't be like 106 degrees and...
And they're in school.
The paint dries before it's off the brush, right? The other one, we talked about a little bit about Measure J. Director, District Director Larkin, kind of told them about it, and how that's going to be affecting the Park District. We mentioned about the, we talked about the community pool project, looking for different types of funding sources, such as naming rights, Measure J, grants, and estimate late 2020 was the date that I had written down here. Right now, in the process of selecting an architectural firm to come up with a contemporary design. The other one, we talked about the, some of the facilities, and how we, in our visioning session, we, there were some dots that we were, had some question marks next to them, because we don't know what the schools plan for sports fields are in the future, and if we're going to be partnering, or being right next to a school, we don't want to be budgeting for the same facility, if we can share a facility. So that's one thing we're looking more into, is partnering and see what we can be more proactive in designing our complexes that we have, that are adjacent to a school and a park, so that's, was a, I think that was an important part of this, this meeting. Director Yearwood, you want to add on?
We covered most of what I had doodled down about. When we talked about Measure J, I put out, did we get about 150 people that signed up for the senior discount? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It was right around between 120, 130.
Okay.
I think it was the final number that I had seen on the report.
That is, sorry, that is a three. That's what happens, you have to write left-handed. So, and then, of course, we gave them a little bit about, we're going to do some outreach for that, the pool, again, we talked about funding sources and things like that, and we were going to go out to RFQ possibly in July or August, to get some more designs than that. Yeah, we talked about the preliminary district-wide facility distribution plan, and we discussed not putting like facilities right next to each other. And that was about it, other than it being a very rainy day, that's all I have to say. That's all I got to say about that.
Okay, thank you for your reports. Now, we're going to move on to the regular calendar, and Item F1 is to accept the preliminary district-wide facility distribution plan.
So we have Laura Taylor here, who's going to walk us through just a brief summary of some of the work that we've done in the joint visioning sessions, as well as giving you an update on some other feedback that we received from our key stakeholders since that last meeting.
Good evening Chair Leinbach and members of the Board. I'm going to err on the side of being more brief than verbose, because I know you've seen it before, so please ask me questions if I missed something that you want to hear more about. Okay, so this is Item F1 on your agenda, and staff is recommending the Board of Directors accept the preliminary district-wide facility distribution plan of June 2017. We met with the Board at the May visioning session, and you folks made a number of comments, which we diligently documented and tracked, and a number of those were directly related to the plan that I'm going to walk you through, and we've addressed your comments. Some of your comments were more global in nature, in terms of like financing, and ongoing long-range planning, and so we're aware of those comments, we have them documented, and we'll address them as we move through, you know, our future planning efforts. Okay, so as I mentioned, the maps I'm going to walk you through reflect the changes that we needed to make after hearing from you guys at the visioning session. And another thing, a global thing that we changed that you'll see on these plans, is that at that visioning session, I mentioned that we knew that the development of Westborough, which is within the city of Rancho Cordova city limits, had a revised plan that had some different park configurations, so we were able to get that, and we added that to the plan, that had some additional community park space. So that was great, because that allowed us to add some additional ballfields. As you recall, we had a slight, we had a deficit in the May 31 version. And the other thing that we did was, we added some proposed facilities to the western quadrant of our district, because we recognized that we had some needs there. So the first map that I'm going to go through is the aquatic center map, and other than the changes to the base map, which shows the Westborough parks up in the upper right-hand corner, it remains unchanged. And the important thing that I just wanted to emphasize on this is that, as I mentioned in the visioning session, our level, our adopted level of service requires two aquatic centers for our full build-out population of 280,000, is what we're predicting at this point. And the aquatic center is a pretty elaborate complex that has several pools and related support facilities, offices, storage units, all that kind of stuff. And so what we're recognizing, however, is that we already have two pool facilities within the Park District that are not quite as, they don't have as many features, but they certainly qualify as a definition we would call a community pool. They have one or two pools, and they have, and well, by the time we're done with the Hagan Park redesign, it'll have, you know, additional features associated with that. So for the planning purpose on this, we're counting those community pools as basically a half of aquatic center. So what you see on here are two community pools and one full aquatic center, and that makes the total level of service that we're anticipating. It also shows the full level of service for the spray parks, which is 14, and we're showing 14 proposed on this map as well. 14 proposed on this map as well. Some of the questions that you folks asked during the workshop was, you asked about the fact that there's no aquatic center shown south of the shooting center, and there's two reasons for that. One is that the Anatolia Neighborhood Association, they have a private pool facility that helps satisfy some of that need, as well as the fact that as far as a level of service, there's not that mechanism to add that to this map. Okay, the next map is the ball field distribution. And on the right-hand side of it, you can see where the colored bullets, we have red for synthetic ball fields, orange for natural turf ball fields that are lit, blue is unlit ball fields, yellow are batting cages, and pinks are sports concessions. And we were able to increase that. Like I said, you can see up in the Westboro area, you see a number of blue dots that are added in there that increased our ball fields in that area. And then we recognized that there was a need in the western quadrant of the district. And so that circle basically is intended to illustrate there's an opportunity to locate some land somewhere in that area to be able to equalize the level of service throughout the district. But at the moment, the land parcels aren't necessarily identified. But so you can see that we've added a synthetic turf ball field, natural lit ball field, unlit ball field, and we've done that to equalize it throughout the whole district. One of the questions that was asked by the board during the visioning session was, what about Rio de Oros and the synthetic turf fields that are proposed there? Will that impact the Fourth of July events or large community events? And I went back and looked at some notes from the planning efforts that we did in 2014, where we included the city, the school district, and the developer, and we looked at space analysis for that whole parcel because we knew at that point that not only was it highly programmed with proposed community facilities, but also that there was an expectation that it would hold a large amount of people. And so what we determined through that planning process is that the group, the planning team felt comfortable that it could hold 25,000 people at an event and still have the equivalent of the area of four soccer fields available that could potentially be synthetic-type fields or not. And so that was a planning effort we did, and so that's why it still would work. Now, we do recognize that we're going to have to get all the stakeholders involved, and we're going to have to go through a planning process that is outlined in our master plan for the incorporated areas in Chapter Nine that spells it out exactly what that process is, and we'll certainly follow that as we go, as the time gets closer to be planning that. Okay, and there was also the comment about coordinating with the school districts, and as you folks reported out about the Two by Two, we will continue to do that with planning staff on the school district's administration throughout our long-term planning efforts. There was also a request to add field lights to the Ulstrum Park ball field, and the issue with that is that Ulstrum Park is a neighborhood park, and it doesn't have any or enough off-street parking. So it's not really appropriate to add lit ball fields to a neighborhood park with no parking. Okay, the next diagram is the soccer field distribution plan. And same story with that in that we were able to add some soccer fields to the community parks that are shown in the Westboro area. And there was also a comment about the Dave Roberts Park. We had accidentally shown that soccer field is lit, now it's shown as unlit. And once again, we've identified the need for some soccer fields over in the western quadrant of the district. Okay, the final map that we're showing is the community space distribution plan. And, you know, this has basically all the community gathering spaces that are listed in our Nexus Study, which includes the district headquarters, the community center, a wellness center, which is also considered to be a senior center, teen center, amphitheater, destination picnic and market spaces. And we had a request to include dog parks in a district-wide facility plan, and so we have added that to this plan. And so our level of service required for 280,000 people would be 8.4, and we're showing nine proposed dog parks spread out throughout the district. And so, and once again, we did identify a need in the western quadrant of the district for a community center, a teen center, an amphitheater, and two destination picnic or marketplace areas in the western quadrant. So we're showing that on this map. So this is a summary of the totals of all the district-wide facilities that we're showing in the maps. And you can see the third row from, I should say, the first row, the total of all areas is what we proposed and is shown on those maps. That's the quantities. And then the second one is what our adopted level of service is to service our full build-out of 280,000 people. And then the last row is the change that you're seeing on our new, our revised plan based on what you guys, you know, compared to what you saw on May 31st. And you'll see that we're able to adjust upwards in some areas where we had the deficit, the greatest deficit, which was the unlit soccer fields and the unlit ball fields. We've been able to get that up so that it's much closer to our required, you know, our adopted level of service. Okay, so a few key points that I'd like to make is that the board has previously provided direction on our preliminary plan, and we have addressed those comments on this plan that you have before you tonight. CRPD staff, if you choose to accept this, will have a tool then to communicate with the public, other agencies, and developers. And it is a preliminary plan, and it may be updated depending on input that we receive as we go about talking about this in the public with the other agencies and the developers. And we do need a preliminary plan now because we do need to be using that as a tool to coordinate planning that's going on right now in some major developments. So the next steps will be that if you choose to accept it, we're going to publish the document on the website, and then we'll be able to take this as a tool out into our, as we do our work coordinating with all the other agencies, and when we go to talk about our district with the community and when we go out and talk about Measure J. And we may bring it back for a revised version back to the board for approval, depending on the level of input that we get. And then after the results of the 2020 census are in, we feel like that would be an ideal time to do a more formal cohesive master plan update for the entire district. So that concludes my presentation, and I'll answer any questions you have.
Ms. Taylor, can you go back to the one with the lit ball fields, if you wouldn't mind? I know it's going to take a second.
Sure.
We talk about...
Right there.
What's that? Definitely quicker than Mr. Goodell. He had a lot more circles he put on his. I'll give you some way, Mr. Goodell.
Pros and cons, tell.
So you made the statement because I was the one who brought up, you know, the use for Fourth of July, and you brought up that we could put 25,000 people within four or six fields, but 100-acre park, correct?
It's 120-acre park when you include the portion of, that's approximately 20 acres on the opposite side of International.
Okay. And then Hagan is how big?
Hagan is 80 acres.
Eighty acres, and all of Hagan is used for Fourth of July, and that includes parking that this park will not, doesn't have the access to mills as we do currently. So my still concern is still putting synthetic in there. If every ounce of Hagan is used right now at 88 acres to 120 acres, you've got cars that aren't parking in Hagan, aren't parking in the school district, you know, we've got all that that we have to consider there. Plus, have we gone to the FAA, since this is underneath their flight path, and asked about these lights being on? Is that going to affect us putting lights in this park? Because are we going to be able to use? I mean, I know they've already gone to the FAA on the Fourth of July because they have to shut down the airport for several hours to have fireworks, but are lights being on on a regular basis going to interfere with that flight path at all?
We actually have asked that question of the FAA, and they understand that it's a community regional park that would have sports field lighting, and they raised no concern about that.
Okay.
As we get closer to the actual planning of that specific park, we will absolutely readdress that topic because we obviously don't want to install a expensive product like a synthetic turf only to turn around and have cars parked on it.
Correct.
And so we will be...
Voids, warranties, and a whole bunch of other stuff, so...
We'll be very mindful of the fact that that is definitely a consideration, so. But as we get closer to the actual design of that specific park, we'll be having those discussions at that time.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wanted to acknowledge the fact that I see the comments that you heard us, and you know, that visioning was a real good opportunity for us to ask questions, to help put more eyes on this plan. And I, you know, the dog park, we're questioned, the wellness, the senior centers, all these, and I see that you've been able to put them in, and I'm very happy. Thank you very much for doing that.
You're welcome.
And I appreciate the attention being paid to the western end of the district. It did seem to be left out of the original plan. You know, the word preliminary, can it ever go away? I mean, because you're always planning, you know...
Honestly, I think not, okay? Master plans are always just a frozen moment in time, and things are constantly changing. But it is good to have a strong master planning document that's approved at least every 10 years. Some people would recommend five years. Knowing that you are, it's a guide. It's not, you know, the absolute bible in terms of what it's going to look like when you're all finished, but it's a guide and a tool.
And I would suggest at this time, it may be preliminary, but at some point, maybe it should be called proposed or some other, you know...
We were trying to really do an evaluation of having a breathing, living document versus a one you put up on the shelf and say, we got that. So a preliminary was very, were the kept on popping up as the flexibility is that we need to have that flexibility, but yet we still need some relatively clear direction going forward to present to the public, our stakeholders, the developers, so that we can let them know that we're looking at it district-wide instead of just by development, by development, or by area by area. We really need to holistically look at our growth here, and I just think that the staff has done an amazing job at pulling this together so quickly in order for us to be able to meet with those developers and really give them a sense of what our district will look like 10 to 15 years from now. So I think it's been a great process for us to undertake, and there'll be onward stakeholder meetings. We've already met with the school district. We've met with the city staff, and as we go forward with Measure J outreach meetings, we'll be presenting that at those and getting some survey feedback so we can still build the data for this and make adjustments and changes. So to answer the question whether preliminary is the right word, it is really just to have the flexibility to change it as the needs of the developers and the needs of the community change, so, yeah.
And I also wanted to say, I really enjoyed that visioning session. It was a lot of fun, and you folks really provided a lot of good information and input, and it was, it was a pleasure to work it into the whole plan, so thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you. And now I will entertain a motion.
Well, I would like to move that we accept the preliminary district-wide facility distribution plan, June 2017, as recommended by staff.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes.
I'll second.
Thank you, Secretary Yearwood. Roll call, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Dancel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Chair Leinbach.
Aye. Well, thank you. Okay, now we are going to move on to item G, which is the public hearings for the preliminary budgets. So we start with item G1.
Thank you, Chair Leinbach. Item G1A is to adopt Resolution 16/17-63 and approve the preliminary budget for Cordova Recreation and Park District General Fund 347A for fiscal year 2017-18, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Okay, are we going to have a presentation or, oh, I have to open the public hearing, that's right. Okay, I am opening the public hearing for General Fund 347A at 7:37.
Then we'll turn it over for the presentation from Finance Manager Matt Goodell.
All right, I'm back. So this is the first, we have eight this evening, eight fund budgets that we're going to present and open for public hearing. The first one is 347, the A General Fund, and the purpose of it is to provide general services. It's our main operating account, and it funds and pays for recreational activities, pays for park plan development, communications, facilities maintenance, contractual services, and administrative services, which is HR, IT, budget and finance, clerk, those kind of things. And the total budget requirement that we're proposing this evening is $5,956,528. Now, what that looks like is we have salaries and employees at 3.5 million, and a transfer in of 876,000. And what that represents is an allocation for park services paying back to General Fund. Being connected with the county, payroll has to come out of General Fund, so all payroll comes out of General Fund. And then the assessments reimburse the General Fund back for park services, and that's what that number represents. Services and supplies at 1.6 million, and then again, $412,000 for park services cost being reimbursed back to the, to the General Fund. The General Fund also pays for the Mather Sports Loan that we currently have at 309,000, and then for the pool project for design phase. We currently have $800,000 as a fund balance. I know someone mentioned earlier about where's the 1.2 million. We did have $1,121,000. That was the amount that was given for that particular project, and the board committed it to the pool project. And over a couple of years, we've used some of that for going towards the pool project along the way. And so that balance currently today is sitting at $800,000. It's committed, it's assigned in the General Fund. And 374,400 this year is budgeted for continuing that design phase for this round, so that's where that money's coming from. So in the board package are all the documents that include the resolution, the financing requirement summary schedule, the long-term loan schedule that we have with the Mather Sports Center, the fixed asset schedule that shows projects, and the expenditure and revenue detail schedule that spells out all the expenses that we have for the chart of accounts, and the operating transfers in and out schedule that has to do with the reimbursement back to the General Fund. And so all those are in the board package if you have any questions. That's into my presentation.
Are there any members of the public would like to comment during the public hearing? Hearing no request for comment. I am closing this public hearing at 7:40 p.m. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, so I will entertain a motion for item G1. Okay, so I will entertain a motion for item G1A.
Do we need, do we need to close the hearing?
I didn't.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Never mind. I was on something else.
Okay, so Chair, Chair Lineback, I'm going to start this with the adopt resolution. I move that we adopt Resolution sixteen slash seventeen dash sixty-three and approve the preliminary budget for Cordova Rec and Park District General Fund three forty-seven A for fiscal year 2017-18 and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes.
I'll second.
Thank you, Secretary Yearwood. Roll call vote, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Danzel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Chair Lineback.
Aye.
Okay, now we will move on to item G1B.
Item G1B is to adopt Resolution sixteen slash seventeen dash sixty-four and approve the preliminary budget for the Independence at Mather Landscaping and Lighting District three four seven B for fiscal year 2017-18 and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Okay, thank you. I am opening the public hearing on, um, the Mather Landscape and Lighting District three forty-seven B at seven forty-one PM.
Did you open the public hea-, I'm just kidding. It's been a very long week. I apologize. I, I apologize. Okay, so this is for three forty-seven B, our Independence at Mather Landscaping and Lighting District. Um, it's, it was formed in the year two thousand and performed services for park services, which is maintenance and landscaping of those parks, uh, there's two of them, and includes administrative expenses that are associated in administering this fund and any contractual services that, uh, take place within the boundary given. The total budget requirement for this fund is one hundred ninety-three thousand five forty-eight. And to note, uh, homes are, are billed on the property tax bill. Last year it was a hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-six cents per house, per year. And there was a three percent CPI increase that staff is recommending, uh, raising it to a hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-eight cents per house, per year.
Per year?
Yep.
I forgot.
And that totals the one hundred ninety-three thousand five forty-eight. Uh, how that money's spent is by, through park services. There's eighty-six thousand dollars in salaries for the crews. Uh, there's fifty-two thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars for park services cost to maintain those parks. And then equipment allocated to this area is two thousand one hundred eighty-four dollars. And then transfer out for, uh, park indirect costs and the admin fee is fifty-two thousand four thirty-two. And so, again, uh, those particular schedules detailed out in the documents within the board package are available. And, uh, that's my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Goodell, are there any members of the public who would like to comment during this hearing? Seeing no request for comment, I am closing this public hearing at seven forty-three PM. Do any members of the board wish to have a, make a comment or have a question?
Nope.
Okay, so if I could have a motion, please.
I'll make that motion. I move that the board directors adopt Resolution sixteen slash seventeen dash sixty-four, approve the preliminary budget for the Independence at Mather Landscaping and Lighting District three four seven B for fiscal year 2017-18 and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Thank you, Director Sloan. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Director Danzel. Roll call, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Danzel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Chair Lineback.
Aye.
Okay, we will now move on to item G1C.
Thank you, Chair Lineback. Item C is to adopt Resolution sixteen slash seventeen dash sixty-five and approve the preliminary budget for the Villages of Zimfandel Community Facilities District, CFD number zero one dash zero one three four seven C for fiscal year 2017-18 and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Thank you. I'm now opening the public hearing for the Villages of Zimfandel, CFD.
Okay, so this one is, uh, was formed in two thousand and one and the services performed are slightly different than the previous ones that we talked about. It's a community facilities district, so it's a little more, uh, items to it. Uh, not only does it maintain and landscape for park services, it also includes, uh, future capital replacement. And, uh, that's what differs this one from the last one. It also includes funds for, for future capital placement. And the total budget requirement is eight hundred fifty-six thousand eight hundred eleven dollars. Uh, the rate per family home listed there in sixteen seventeen was three eighteen sixty-two. And with a three percent CPI increase, it goes to, uh, ten dollars more at three twenty-eight eighteen per house for the year. Uh, Villages of Zimfandel, this one's a little bit different. So salaries here, if you notice, is only twenty percent of the overall budget at one hundred seventy-one thousand. Uh, where most of the time, what's standard is for every dollar that you have in labor is fifty cents in services and supplies. And what's different about this is that there's, there's a lot more contractual services going on here. So we contract and proceed a landscape to take care of our mediums, our streetscapes in that area where our, our in-house park crews take care of the parks and the facilities. So that's the difference here. So that's why there's only one hundred seventy-one thousand for in-house salaries and then four hundred sixty-four thousand dollars for the, or I'm sorry, um, for services and supplies because that incre-, that includes the two hundred and eighty thousand dollar contract plus the material, uh, included in that as well. Uh, the two hundred and twelve thousand seven twenty-nine again is for park and direct costs for mechanic, courtyard, supervisors, that kind of thing. And the admin fee is included in that as well. And then eight thousand one ninety is the allocation for the Villages of Zimfandel for equipment. And, uh, no projects are scheduled for this area. Again, the detailed schedules are within the board package and that's my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this Fund Center Villages of Zimfandel, CFD? Seeing no member of the public wishing to comment, I close this public hearing at seven forty-seven PM. Do any of the directors have questions?
I just have a quick question. So this one is set up for capital improvements? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Is there any money being set aside for capital improvements currently?
So this area, um, I think the cost of streetscapes, medians, sound walls, those o-, other extra items that we typically, uh, don't manage, uh, was under mis-, underestimated when this was set up. I really, I truly believe that because it's almost three hundred thousand dollars out of the eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, set aside for parks and facilities. And so, uh, the answer, no. We have thirty thousand in the fund balance now for, for future capital replacement.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, when the CFD was established, was there a standard or, uh, any kind of a requirement for set asides?
Uh, there isn't a requirement. Uh, it's good practice. Of course, when it's, uh, supposed to be integrated into it, uh, I wasn't here in two thousand and one, so I'm not quite sure what the full intent was or with what they anticipated the true cost of taking care of those, those, uh, medians and streetscapes would be. Because that's the majority of the cost for this area, is that specific thing.
Um, it's my understanding, I wasn't here also in two thousand and one, but ever since I joined the board, that was the biggest challenge, which was, um, if I'm not mistaken, right now we have like, uh, eight thousand, uh, for our, um, uh, what do you call this? Park development fee, park development fee, remember our CP, CPI, we put it and we brought it to where, to be able to have the, build the quality and maintain and all this. And I think at that time, this was one of their first villages, and if I'm not mistaken, at that time it was only three thousand that they were asked to pay in. Because possibly at that time, you know, like you were saying, Laura, you, they didn't really have a full plan. And so it was, it was always, always found to be, um, a little underestimated there. I remember, uh, Director Garrison, who lives out there, was always, you know, concerned and he even wanted to, he even suggested that maybe it would be good for them to go back and do some form of a ballot vote to see if they could put more in. Uh, but unfortunately, that's where we are with this.
Yeah, and that was a discussion because I, when I, when I first came here, I noticed PMA ID right away was a concern. And then VOZ in my mind was the second one. Um, but, but I find interesting is usually what happens, and Laura could probably correct me if I'm wrong, is that parks is built last. It's usually homes, so they could sell the homes and the park is kind of the last forethought, right? And in this area, I think the other, the other way happened, the parks were built and it's not fully built out yet. I mean, there's still a lot of homes and apartments and things that they're still building in the Capital Village area that, so we're not realizing that full incomes, that revenue stream, uh, to support the maintenance of the parks and to build up that capital facilities fund.
And I think the Villages of Zimfandel covers, the assessment covers the Village Green? Is that part of it?
The Capital Villages and Villages of Zimfandel, both areas, correct.
Yeah, so, okay, so that's, that's interesting. Okay, thank you. That was it. That's why it's always been underfunded.
Okay, if we have no further questions, can I get a motion?
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion. I move the board of directors adopt Resolution sixteen dash seventeen, or slash seventeen dash sixty-five and approve the preliminary budget for the Villages of Zimfandel Communities' Philly District, CFD number zero one dash zero one three forty-seven dash C for fiscal year 2017-18 and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Thank you, Secretary Yearwood.
Second.
Thank you, Director Danzel. Roll call, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Danzel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Chair Lineback.
Aye.
Okay, we will move on to item G1D.
Uh, just a question, would we like to continue? It appears that our guest has arrived, so we continue with this item or pause for the previous?
I am willing to pause. Okay.
Hold on, man. Hold on. He's already ready for his photo.
Good evening, board. I would like to welcome, um, Representative from the Office of Congressman Ami Barra, Matthew Cicado.
Hi, hi, good evening, board. Please excuse my delay. There was a minor car accident on fifty, so. Um, it gives great pleasure to come to you this evening and, and see a lot of familiar faces that I know up there. Uh, and I'm here on behalf of Congressman Barra, um, pardon me. So, on behalf of Congressman Barra, we'd like to recognize July as the National Recreation and Park Association's Park and Recreation Month, specifically commending the Cordova Recreation and Park District for all the great work and valuable hard work that you've done to our community, but also to embrace the commitment that you have going to the future. And this is something that I can tell you that my wife and two-year-old little girl at our park right now enjoying the amenities that we have here in this community, this is the hard work and the dedication, um, that not only of you with the board, but also realizing that us as citizens, uh, need these amenities and they're actually necessary to make this the wonderful community that we call home. So I am proud, uh, and very humble to stand in front of you right now and present to you this official congressional certificate that not only is a copy of it here in my hands, but a copy of it has been enshrined, uh, within Congress itself and will be protected there, uh, commending the hard work of this park district, but also recognizing everything you do, not only for the month of July and this month that we're celebrating, but also year-round. So on behalf of Congressman Ami Barra, the constituents of California Congressional District Seven, which includes all of Rancho Cordova, we are very honored to have an incredible park system that's led by Terry and everybody else up there. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you very much. We truly appreciate it.
Right, approach to.
Uh, we, we might come down and, and make use of the camera. How's that?
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, that would be nice. Can I take a few photos?
We're going to pause for a brief recess. We'll return momentarily.
That's how, yeah, we.
Okay, we're reconvening the meeting at eight oh five and we are now on item G1D.
Thank you, Chair Lineback. Item D is to adopt Resolution sixteen slash seventeen dash sixty-six and approve the preliminary budget for the Shooting Center Capital Improvements Fund, three four seven D for fiscal year 2017-18 and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
We're going to open the public hearing on this item at eight oh five PM.
Okay, good evening again, Matt Goodell, Finance Manager. Uh, so this is our Shooting Center slash, uh, district-wide facility fund. And I revisited the contract, the agreement that we have with our concessionaire just to confirm exactly what this fund is used for. Because I've heard from different people on, on, on their take, their perception on what this fund is for. So these are exact, um, statements taken from the contract itself, so it's very important. Uh, it says the district will have complete control of these funds, that it can be used for programmatic and operational needs of the district. It's for future let abatement or construction, reconstruction, modernization of any district facility, including the Shooting Center, but any facility. So I'll, I want to note that and record that because it's very, very important. I hear rumors and people asking questions. That's the answer. I mean, as simple as that, that's the answer. And so, uh, since we're not quite sure what we're doing with the Shooting Center, we can always make budget adjustments later on. But right now this is for an environmental study cost, the, for the thirty thousand, so that is all that we're budgeting for this current, uh, budget cycle for thirty thousand for this, for this fund. And that is my report.
Um, I would like to invite any member of the public who'd like to comment on this Uh, seeing no member coming forward, we will close this public hearing at eight oh seven PM. Are there any questions from, uh, the directors? Okay, is there a motion?
Chair Sloan, or Chair Lineback, sorry, I was, started looking at Chair Sloan, or former Chair Sloan. I'm just doing great tonight.
This heat is affecting.
Yes, it has, not enough water.
I feel totally vindicated now.
Uh, Chair Lineback, I, I move the board of directors adopt Resolution sixteen slash seventeen dash sixty-six and approve the preliminary budget for the Shooting Center Capital Improvement Fund, three four seven D for fiscal year 2017-18 and authorize the district administrator to file with county auditor controllers.
Thank you, Director Danzel.
I'll second.
Thank you, Secretary Yearwood. Roll call, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Danzel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Chair Lineback.
Aye.
So we're going to move on to item G1E.
Thank you, Chair Lineback. Item E is to adopt Resolution sixteen slash seventeen dash sixty-seven and approve the P- and approve the preliminary budget for the Sunridge Community Facilities District, CFD number zero four dash zero one three four seven E for fiscal year 2017-18, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Okay, I'm opening the public hearing at eight oh eight P M.
All right, hello again. This, this one was Sunridge, the Communities Facilities District. It was formed in two thousand and four. It has specific description of services within the boundaries of Sunridge and Anatolia. It's meant for parks, open space, landscape setbacks, medians, and our bike paths. It can be used for acquisition, construction, and improvements, so it's a CFD, and for maintenance and landscaping, to continue the maintenance, and any administrative expenses that are associated with the fund. So, the total budget requirement for this particular area is one million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. And the fee per home last year was three hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-one cents, and for the upcoming year is three hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Per year?
Per year, correct. And how it's broken up, the standard is salaries employees for parks services at five hundred and twenty-one thousand, and for services and supplies for those parks at three hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars. There is a transfer out for park indirect and admin for four seventy-one, eight ninety-one, and then equipment portion allocated to this fund, twenty-nine thousand, three eighteen. And it's a brand-new area, and projects aren't quite going yet, so there's zero capital improvements going on. All schedules are in the board package, and that's my presentation, thank you.
I now invite any member of the public to comment on this item. Seeing none, I will close this public hearing at eight ten P M. Do any Directors have questions? Okay, motion, please?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution sixteen slash seventeen dash sixty-seven and approve the preliminary budget for the Sunridge Community Facilities District, CFD number zero four dash one three forty-seven E for fiscal year 2017-18, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Director Sloan, roll call, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Danzel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Chair Lineback.
Aye. Okay, we're gonna move on to item G one F.
Thank you, Chair Lineback. Item G one F is to adopt Resolution sixteen slash seventeen dash sixty-eight and approve the preliminary budget for the Cordova Golf Course, three four seven F, for fiscal year 2017-18, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
All right, I am now opening the public hearing at eight eleven P M.
Okay, this one's for the Cordova Golf Course. It's an eighteen-hole golf course that we have on the Jackson Highway, has a lighted driving range, and a brand-new concessionaire at the restaurant, so please visit. It's called the Nineteenth Hole Cantina, amazing, amazing Mexican food, you must stop by and try it. And for the maintenance cost and the golf starters and everything that's part of this is nine hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars is our target budget for the golf course. It is an enterprise fund, so it's attached to the revenues that it receives. Fifty percent of that is four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and that's for our golf maintenance staff that we have, and for all our golf starters that run the pro shop and run the range. Service and supplies for all the landscape materials is two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, at thirty percent. We have a transfer out for the admin fee for the support at ninety-three thousand. And then we do have a couple of projects for the courtyard and the restroom costing seventeen thousand, eight hundred, that's planned for there. And then equipment, which is a cart lease, we're gonna start up the cart lease again. I know we skipped it a year, and now it's time to refresh those carts, so they want to start up another lease. So, that includes the cart lease and a mower for that thirty-nine thousand dollars. And also forty thousand dollars for the golf pro shop commodity, so that's the resale goods that we bring in, and they turn around and sell it. And so, that totals the nine hundred and thirty thousand dollar budget. Again, the schedules are attached in the board package, and that's my presentation, thank you.
I now invite any member of the public to comment on this item if they wish. Seeing none, I'm gonna close this public hearing at eight thirteen P M. Do any Directors have any questions?
No, thank you.
Motion?
I'll make the motion. I, I move that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution sixteen seven slash seventeen dash sixty-eight and approve the preliminary budget for the Cordova Golf Course, three four seven F, for fiscal year two thousand seventeen-18, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Thank you, Director Sloan.
Second.
Thank you, Director Danzel, roll call.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Danzel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Chair Lineback.
Aye. We're gonna move on to item G one G.
Thank you, Chair Lineback. Item G one G is to adopt Resolution sixteen slash seventeen dash sixty-nine and approve the preliminary budget for the Measure J, CFD twenty sixteen dash zero one, three four seven P, for fiscal year 2017-18, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Okay, I am going to open this public hearing at eight fourteen P M.
So, this is for the CFD two thousand sixteen dash zero one, which is Measure J. Unfortunately, when we went to the county to get a fund letter, J was already taken. So, we cannot call it three four seven J, it's three four seven P for Measure J, just to let you know. Formed very recently, last year, two thousand and sixteen, starting this year, this is the first levy that we're instituting this. And the district service, the description of services for this CFD is acquisition and construction for parkways, parks, open space, landscape setbacks, bike paths, median, and medians. We currently do not have any bike paths that we manage in this area, but it's very important, we might someday. So, it's included in the description of services. But this only pertains to property that's owned by CRPD. Of course, maintenance and landscaping for operations, provide after-school activities, tutoring, homework, assistance, sports, and programs, so there's a recreation component that we can apply to it. Provide security patrols and public safety, obviously a number-one priority. And repair and replace of wear and tear and vandalism of district facilities. So, if there's any major issues going on with our facilities, this allows us the ability to apply some of these funds there. The total budget requirement, the request for the first year is the full one point seven million, one million, seven hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars, and that averages forty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents per single-family home unit. And how that's gonna break out is a hundred thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars in salaries, and that's for park services for part of their operations directly to Measure J. Services and supplies, a hundred and fifteen thousand, nine twenty-nine, so that's the security component. And then transfer outs, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand for the PMRID area, that's kind of to help out that section, that's what that money's for, for park services. Projects at six hundred and forty-four thousand, seven fifty-five, including the, the labor and the services and supplies, those are tied together for projects. That's why it's all yellow, it's all one side, so that's all project-related, including the equipment, sixteen thousand, nine twenty-six, versus operations, which is the eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, and the brown piece of the pie. So, they're all related. So, that's the total for one million, seven hundred, or one point seven million. All the, the schedules are in the packet, and that's my presentation.
Okay, I now invite any member of the public who would like to comment on this item. Seeing no one coming forward, I am closing this public hearing at eight seventeen P M. And are there any questions from the Board? I have just a couple, one comment and one question where I'm just gonna ask you to do the math. The comment is, you know, to be very clear, that these funds cannot be spent in areas of the district other than the current PMIRD. So, be very clear that some of the other districts that have these large assessments, they are not getting additional funds from this Measure J. And then my math question is, what's the combination of the two assessments come to, what does it come to?
Between two point seven and two point eight million.
The, per parcel, the forty-eight dollars plus the twenty, what's the total assessment for the PMIRD?
Seventy-three dollars.
Seventy-three dollars, okay, which as we all know, is still far less than any other area in the district. And we, you know, we have dire needs for those funds, and a lot of things that, you know, those funds, good uses that those funds can be put to, and at least we have additional funds. But I hope that the residents of the PMIRD understand that the area is still underfunded despite the additional assessment. So, those are my, that was my question and my comments.
And then, just to follow on what you had said, I believe the, the PMRID, the twenty-eight, twenty-six clarification here, both for myself and for the public, the clarification is the PMRID special assessment, which is about twenty-six dollars per household in the zone A, B, C, and D, of which D is really not, not really drawing any of that. That twenty-six was specifically for patrolling, main, you know, green, safe, and, and clean, right? And, and specifically for the, the locals where they were collected. The, the J, Measure J, allows us to go into some capital improvement, investment, acquisition. Am I right? It said, you said it right here. If you would like to put your slide back on before this.
The definition, Matt, about replacement.
Acquisition and construction, parkways, parks.
Repair and replacement of wear and tear and vandalism of district facilities. So, in relation to the wording, we need to look at replacement plans versus potentially maybe new plans if we're looking to replace an amenity. Does that make sense?
So, then explain the first sentence.
Yeah, that's not, facilities isn't located or included in it, that's the only thing. It's parkways, open space, medians, bike paths, it doesn't list facilities as construction.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so only the, the capital improvement would probably be more on in repair and replacement of existing facilities, or at least to replace it, right? Replace it, okay, that's good.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's a little bit different in that what one can do. And I think that's one of the challenges that we have to, I'm sure, Matt, you have to make sure that whatever the special assessment, whatever we're bound by there, and Measure J's, it's the, what it is, is that it covers the same area. It brings resources to the same area, zone of established city, which Chair Lineback had said. It brings the resources to at least do more than what is done, but definitely not, not enough. But better than not, better than not.
I'll take that.
Yep.
No, we're looking forward, I mean, I know staff is chomping at the bit to get to this. Of course, funding doesn't come in until late January and May of two thousand and eighteen, so we saw the time. I know there was a statement made about PMRID not being included, but we have them scheduled for July twelfth to meet and talk about this, about these projects, and continue on through December. I mean, the budget projects are just kind of placeholders. Like I said, they're not guaranteed, things can change, community outreach, PMRID input. And so, all that together, and we'll come up with the final plan. Hopefully, by the time funding starts rolling in, and then we start moving on these projects.
Can you go to the pie graph? Help me out, I totally missed this, apparently reading this other one. Eight hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars is being transferred out for what?
So, there's two things, there's park services and then the admin fee for administering this fund.
Okay. The park services to do all these projects, or park services?
No, so, so we have an account, it's, it includes supervisors, it includes the park superintendent, it includes all mechanics, the courtyard shop, the equipment, maintaining that, fuel costs. It's something that's not specifically direct to an assessment, but they're, they're all using the same thing, which is the park superintendent, the supervisors, and equipment, and the cost associated is so much. So, that's what that equates to.
Well, it looks like a much larger transfer out, say, than other funds have as a percentage of the fund, but I think part of it is because the way Measure J is structured, that it can be used for maintenance in the PMIRD area.
And also operations, it's beyond just the indirect, it's correct. I'm trying to find that page, but yes.
So, some of that transfer out is going to the PMIRD, right, not to the general fund? Because that's forty-eight percent.
Going to PMRID, not the general fund, correct. That transfer is going to PMRID. So, we talked about that in the workshop today about the funds going, they were going to PMRID. So, that, that, that fund was, or the transfer was not going to the general fund, correct? So, it stays there.
I guess I don't understand why it needs to be transferred to the PMRID, why.
It's a completely different fund, I know, I wish we could have found a way to combine it, but, you know, they had to be separate.
It's just a huge challenge.
One's zoned, one's not.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. I know, trust me, I'm the back end, trying to figure all this out in puzzle pieces, it's my world, I'll take care of it.
So, I have a quick question, Matt.
Yeah.
In the, in the map, you know, that was provided in the PMRID engineer's report, it has the zones, and it has, it has the zones, and, and I'm, I'm trying to understand this. It's funny how it says we have zone A, B, C, and D. But Zone D is zero, single-family units. So, we don't collect anything from them because there's no one there?
Partially true. So, we have Zone A, which is the city of Rancho Cordova North, which is central city Cordova. We have B, which is Rosemont, Larchmont, Riviera East, which is the west side of our district. And then Zone C is Gold River, solely just Gold River. And D is interesting, it's, it's actually the rest of our district. It's, it's the east side, it's the south side, it is the whole rest of our district. And I think the intent there of not collecting from there is that they have their own assessments, the Sunridge, the VOZ, the MATHER, and so they're already feeding into park maintenance and capital improvements. And so, I think that is why it's always been zero, just in case maybe those go away and they have to now start billing D, I don't know, so that's, that's, yeah.
That's a very clear understanding of.
I don't think you can ever collect from an area that didn't have the opportunity to vote for that assessment, though.
Yeah, I'd have to check to see if D did vote, but that's something that we'll look into.
I would, that's a good.
D did not vote, because I literally.
D did not vote, okay.
I didn't vote for that.
Because that was never really specific. I'm very aware that the CFDs don't get covered by this funding, but that's true. So, Zone D is the CFDs.
Not on the history either, but my guess is then, if that's the case, that it was, it was included just for future annexation as a possibility. Maybe that's, that's what's going on, yeah.
Okay, if there are no other questions, can I get a motion, please?
Chair Lineback, I, I move the Board of Directors adopt Resolution sixteen slash seventeen dash sixty-nine and approve the preliminary budget for Measure J, CFD twenty sixteen dash zero one, three forty-seven P for finance, for fiscal year twenty seventeen-18, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Thank you, Director Danzel.
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes, roll call, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Danzel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Chair Lineback.
Aye. Okay, we're gonna move on to our final preliminary budget item, G one H.
Thank you, Chair Lineback. Item G one H is to adopt Resolution sixteen slash seventeen dash seventy and approve the preliminary budget for the Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District, three four seven R, for fiscal year twenty seventeen-18, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing on this item at eight twenty-seven P M.
All right, this is our final item for the evening. This is for the Park Maintenance Recreation Improvement District, better known as PMRID. It was formed in two thousand and six, and the description of services for this specific area is for maintenance, landscaping, and installation. It includes for parks, facilities, natural lands, open space, corridors, street furnitures, entry monuments, pools, and security patrols, and et cetera, that's what it actually says. There's a bunch of items, there's walking trails, there's hardcore surfaces, there's a long list of items. Pretty much covers everything that we do in the district within that area. The total budget requirement for this is one million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars, and includes the PMRID money plus the benefit match. Again, last year, it was twenty-five dollars and twenty-nine dollars per house, I'm sorry, twenty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. This year includes a three percent CPI increase, so it brings it up seventy-two. This year includes a 3% CPI increase, so it brings it up 72 cents to $26.05 for the final per house. Breakout of this, it's, it's, it's pretty comprehensive because there's transfers going on from in and out, from PMRID, or I mean, from Measure J, and, and so salaries direct to PMRID is $440,000, and then there's an enhancement of the salaries for $363,000 coming from that fund. Services and supplies, the same situation. The PMRID direct is $354,000 with an enhancement from Measure J for $297,000. Transfer out is $289, and that's for park and direct, and the admin fee for this fund. And then structures improvements direct for this particular area is $29,700. It's more, but it lands in Measure J. And then equipment portion of this is $9,282, so there's a lot of pieces in this, in this PMRID puzzle. And so that's the 1.1 million. Again, the schedules detailed out in the package, and that's my report.
Okay, I'm inviting any member of the public that would like to comment on this item to come forward. Yes?
Thank you for your time. I just have, I noted that it did say for pool in there, obviously, and I guess my question to the board is, I'm assuming the reason you're not asking for more money from the public is that you're assuming that they would not pass that. But if I could have some thinking behind it, because clearly in 2006, the money that was asked for was not enough to cover, to really make Rancho Cordova what I think people in 2006 and now people in 2017 what we want it to be. So I feel like even with this new money that you've gotten, it's still obviously not enough. And so I'm wondering the thinking behind that. So, thank you very much.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Laura Lancetl.
Well, I guess I would ask our district administrator to address that, even though he was not with the district at the time.
I think that's what Measure J came up to do.
In terms of whether we think that it's enough for us to be able to build a pool?
No, I think the question was, why was the amount selected? Why wasn't it more?
That's a great question. Matt, maybe, can help me with this?
You know, when it comes to taxpayer dollars, you want to be careful because you don't want to overtax people. And so with Measure J, I was here for that. I was, I was the catalyst for that. I saw the need in the PMRID area. And so what the thinking behind Measure J was, was for enhancement of operations because the, the cost per acre was ridiculously low, and the standard needed to be brought up, obviously, to match what's going on in the rest of our district, the new development. These parks are taking off. And, and also a need for repair of, of, of small nature. Looking at survey results from, from materials that we have before and what's important, I took a look at that and what the cost figures were associated with that. You know, pools and baseball fields weren't exactly high on, on overall survey materials. And I didn't come up with that figure thinking, is it going to pass or not going to pass? I mean, that's not the way to go about it. You don't come up with, ah, are they going to accept $100, are they going to accept $20? You know, you can't go about it thinking like that. The thought process was, this was the immediate need we needed at the time, and to take care of the, the issues that we had at hand. And it ended up, you know, coming up to that dollar amount when you just divide it by how many properties there are. But no doubt, there's some major facilities located in that area that, that PMRID and Measure J might not be able to tackle on their own. And so, yes.
I just wanted to, if I understood your question correctly, when I joined the board in 2006, they had just passed the special assessment of 20, at that time, I think it was like $19 or something like this. And you are correct, after it had gone and it had passed, they were talking clean, green, and safe. So they were like security patrol, but very quickly after that realized that it was not going to be enough, and that it was pretty low. But they, we, we, the park, had to do what we were going to have to do, and that was we ended up with the security patrol, had to do the maintenance and assessment. And I believe that this Measure J was an answer to saying, how can we increase? You see, rather than increase that special assessment, go for the Measure J because it's for the very same areas, okay, that it covers. And that's one of the reasons why it gives a little bit more to it, and it seemed like after all the studies had gone out, that was a, a reasonable and a very good, good amount to be able to ask. So the Measure J was the answer to this in 2006. This was really too low, right the way they found out. And I had just joined the board then, when that happened.
You know, I think it opened up at $16, actually, in 2006.
Yeah, it was low.
And the thing is, it has an inflation factor built in, but it's 3%. If you do 3% of $16, I mean, this year is at 25 to 26, it went up 72 cents.
Yes.
From 2006 to 2018, that revenue increase does not even come close to all our cost things that are going on, the economy that was tanking in 2008. I mean, so much is going on. So I think the intent in 2005, 2006, when this is established, might have been right on, but so much happened and just not enough escalation in the amount to satisfy all the needs that were taking place.
And there was park renovation fees, which was the city, it's, the city had put that on the developers that were building new, they had the park renovation fees. And that was specifically in answer to the established Rancho Cordova that said, hey, what about our parks? You see? And so at that time, that with the special assessment seemed to be able to take care of it, but I believe now the park renovation fees are, are still the cities. I, we don't know whether they want to continue to impose that on the developers. And it was on the parks' initiative to bring it to the voters. We are very, you know, it is a very difficult thing to deal with when you're bringing this to the voters, because we had to have a 66%, not just majority 50%. And, you know, you were right, everybody voted and brought it up to this, we got about 70, 71% approval. So let's hope that this can help us at least start making some movement all in the PMRID areas.
Just to add to that, too, we had a discussion earlier at the workshop. It is difficult. We don't have much money coming into the area, especially where the Hagan Pool is located. It is in the PMRID and Measure J area. Matt and I have worked very closely within the last couple of weeks to really identify funding sources to get the pool going. And we're still working. We are trying every creative angle in order to look at financing the pool to bring it back, using possibly some Measure J money, possibly PMRID money, but there are restrictions on how we bring it back because of the wording and the way that we receive the money. So we just have to be very mindful of how we describe the project. So we're working on that very diligently. We have earmarked monies in the next year's budget for us to get the program going and funded. It is just going to be a struggle for us to figure out if that is an ability for us to use those funding sources to bring the pool back. And if not, then we have to find another alternative way to do so.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing at 8:37 PM. Are there any questions by the directors? Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Chair Lineback, I, I move the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 16/17-70 and approve the preliminary budget for the Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District 347R for fiscal year 2017-18, and authorize the district administrator to file with the county auditor controller.
Thank you, Director Danzel. Thank you, Director Sloan. Did I miss another second, a prior second?
That's fine.
Okay, sorry. Thank you, Director Sloan. We'll go with that. And roll call, please.
Director Sloan.
Aye.
Director Danzel.
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood.
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Aye.
And Chair Lineback.
Aye. Okay, so now we are on to item H, Board of Directors items. We start with H1, Board Member Reports. And at this time, I will begin my report. I attended the CARPD conference with Director, Directors Danzel and Sloan, and with our district administrator, Patrick Larkin. We're just extremely proud that the district was awarded the Outstanding New Facility Award for the Hillside Park, and specifically for designing with land. And so I would just love to ask our planning director, Laura Taylor, to come up here to receive this reward, because it was really your hard work and Christina James', James' hard work, your creativity, and just respect for the land. And then the neighbors love it, it's so innovative and fun, and we are extremely proud of you, too. So if you wouldn't mind coming up to accept this award.
I just wanted to make a comment and give a little shout out to Christina James, who's my park planner, who was the one that worked the most closely with the developers' landscape architecture firm. And Christina was the one who insisted that they redesign that park to use the slope as an asset, because in the original design, it was not an asset. And so I'm very proud of Christina, and, and she deserves the credit for that particular award, in my opinion, so, thank you.
Go ahead and do a picture.
Yes.
We'll do a Facebook picture.
Oh, we have three pictures.
Picture night.
It's to keep you from forming black clouds. All right, so we're going to continue. I, I think I'll just finish my report for the conference. As I said, we were just most proud to be the recipients of that ward, award, I'm sorry. So I attended the several sessions. One of them was a CalPERS session on pension liabilities, and a lot of the discussion was not so much about how much the liabilities are going to be increasing, but whether or not it made sense to pre-fund them or try and buy out of the program. And buying out of the program is actually low on that list of things to do. It's extremely expensive to buy out of CalPERS because they require you to pay all current and future potential liabilities in one lump sum, so it's almost impossible. Prefunding the liabilities can save you some money in the long run, but it's extremely expensive as well. So bottom line is, he said, you know, just keep paying your premiums, and don't try and get overly creative in terms of, you know, one, one district stopped paying their bill altogether, which had never happened before in CalPERS history. And eventually, CalPERS went to court and got permission to stop paying the pensions of their retirees. So it's a very, you know, severe consequence if you think that you're going to simply stop paying the bill and CalPERS will continue to pay your retirees. They will not. So pay the bill, Matt.
So just, just to note on that, last year, we did pre-fund it in July, and I think we saved $30,000, $35,000, so there was an advantage. The only thing is, you know, it does put an impact on cash flow.
Yeah, right.
And, you know, for a $400,000 amount, does it really make sense to have that savings out? So this year, we're not, we're not going to pre-fund it. We're going to, we're going to pay as we go.
Well, you know, and those are the choices you have to make, you know, they're all financial, just as long as the choice isn't to stop paying the bill altogether. I also attended a breakout session, which was really interesting, on social media uses and benefits. They, they recommended that you use everything out there for social media, because different people plug into different things, so Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, Pinterest, YouTube, Flickr, and I put a shout out to my cousin who runs Flickr, just saying. And they said the best thing to posts, to post are people at events, pets, beautiful scenery, and videos. Those are the things that get the most face time from people on social media. So I guess pictures of directors holding up plaques don't work as well as, you know, dogs chasing frisbees or something, so. And then I attended a session about working effectively with your local legislators to keep the name of your agency real for your local legislators. So when it comes time to fund, or award, or prioritize, they've heard of you, and so you enter into the equation. So one of the things that happened tonight was one of the things that the presenter recommended. Let your local legislators know about the honors that you have received, your awards, things like Park and Recreation Month, so that they continue to have things about your agency in front of them. And that is one of the best ways to have them behave in ways that benefit your agency, as opposed to just forget that you're even there. And they also suggested that you keep in touch with legislative staff, and, you know, don't hesitate to buy them a beer, and, and be known to the staff of the legislator as well. And the last session I attended was Board and Staff Relations, which was done by Brent Ives, whom we have all, I think, maybe experienced. And it's just always a good refresher about how boards and staff of public agencies best interact to be most effective. Thank you. Director Danzel.
So my, my, my part of the conference was the best. It was this, right here. Let's play. And we found out we don't throw beach balls in a room full of glasses. We definitely don't do that. The keynote speaker, unfortunately, I cannot recall his name, but really resonated that, you know, work is work, but we need to bring enjoyment back into work, and, and he's got a, you know, about making it playful and, and things like that. And I think Administrator Larkin has actually already started doing that with our staff here. So that was, that was good to, to see that he's already on board with, with some of this kind of things. You know, we played little trivia games and things like that that made you actually think outside the box, which was really good. I, too, intended the social media. It was, as Chair Lineback said, dogs, for some reason, and pets are just, in all the agencies that spoke, I think there was four different agencies that spoke, that was their big thing, was pets. Pets was, was the big one, then kids. I wasn't quite understanding that, but okay. And did sit down with Brent Ives again a few, a little bit, one-on-one time with him to, to speak, just because we've had some changes since the last time-
I'm more associated with what the planning stages of this conference. And we tried to bring very pertinent sessions so that, this is like, we had Peter Titishi from the Chamber talk about the minimum wage a second time in a row because it was a very popular event last year. And the fact that it was on the coast really changed things. We had a little higher of attendance, and the weather was beautiful. I felt that, you know, a lot of the, like Brent, I've seen Brent a million times, although it's such an important thing for people, new people. There were a lot of new faces at this conference. And that's what I think is important, is that we, these, Pat was the first-time attendee because now he's in, you know, District Administrator. And we have these round tables where he got to sit around outside, which was a nice choice. We're inside. I don't know why we stayed inside. To discuss the situations, what's going on with all the different districts up and down the coast here in the state of California. And you really realize that, you know, you're not alone in all these issues. You know, a lot of facilities are hurting because of funding and because of age. And there are people who are trying to get creative on how, what are we going to do about fixing them? There's only one district that I found out, it was up in Bear Creek. They actually recently bought a property that had a pool. It was like a club and tennis courts. So they're excited about it. And I says, well, I hope.
Work for our meeting requirements. So that's the hope, is that we can do it that day. We haven't gotten word yet whether that meeting's going to happen yet because they have to look at the county offices and see. And SMUD offered, you know, place there, but that's what we're waiting on. And so that was it for that meeting. But I, looking at the paperwork, my term there ends December of this year. So as of now, unless I'm re-elected by this board at come that point. But I know Director Sloan has sat on it, Director Titishi's sat on that also. So not that I mind being on it, but it definitely is an interesting group of people. I know when Director Sloan said he was there, it was mainly water districts. Now it seems like there's, we've got the CS, we've got consumers on there, we've got several representatives from that group on there. So there's more park districts that are showing up at least in the meetings. So we can talk to more parks, and the water people are there. So we work hand-in-hand because they want to keep us green, and I just keep asking them to lower our park rates and, you know, do what they can. But, so I wouldn't mind staying on that committee when that comes up. But that's the end of my report there.
Thank you. Director Yearwood, or Vice Chair, or Secretary Yearwood?
That's all right. Well, I don't have any cool meetings I went to that talked about how many people deep to bury. But I attended the special meeting, the Visioning Work Session on May 31st. Kudos to Laura and her staff. It was a very nice, like, again, to see where we kind of think everything is going to be so we can go, like, she has her discussions with developers. When they say, we're going to go, no, this is what we really need. So that was really nice. That was a good meeting. And then the other thing was the special meeting for the Shooting Center. I agree with Director Danzel. It's always nice to have great audience participation and get people out there. The only other thing I can remember that was quite a heated topic was the Little League folks when they were in here with their picket signs and stuff like that that one time. And then a dog park over at Hagan. That was the most robust. And I think feral cats were a hot topic, too, at one time. So, but it was good to hear from a lot of folks. And there was a lot of folks there from the district, a lot of folks who reside from outside of the district. So yes, that was a very useful meeting to get people's input. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Vice Chairius.
With regards to the Shooting Center meeting, I thought that was, that I wanted to give some kudos to staff. I think they did an excellent job of being able to put it out there, to be able to try and clearly state the situation, you know? Seemed a little confusing as to say simply that we didn't, we were going towards not closing the Shooting Center. That's not the vote we're going to be taking. The vote we're going to be taking next month is going to be on whether or not we will exercise our continuance and renewal of the lease as it is, or whether we will go ahead and work on an RFP option, or were we going to just close it? And I don't think that was where we were at that point. I also think that it was very good, the PowerPoint or the information, that really helped with being able to stay on focus and to, you know, to be able to get some information out there. I think staff did a great job handling it all and even listening to the passion that was around. I agree, it's great when people are engaged. I know it can be a little challenging and hard, most especially when you have some misunderstandings or so. So education, education, education is very important, and I think we did as best we can, and staff did a good job. And I'm hoping that we'll be able to, again, keep our focus on the district and the people that we serve. With regards to the Visioning Workshop, oh, that was really good, and staff did a great job. And not only that, but staff made it very comfortable for us to be able to give our comments, give our suggestions, ask our questions. And it was very good. It's very hard to try and give a comment because, you know, we don't want staff to think, you just don't put it. No, we're a team. And I thought that was a great team effort, and it was run that way. So staff's doing a good job. Thank you.
Okay, and like my fellow directors, I attended the Board Visioning Work Session, and I agree, it was an extremely productive meeting. And the reason it was productive is because it was so well-prepared. And I think what came out of it, well, what we were presented with, and then with some of the few changes, we have a really, you know, awesome picture of the district and current facilities and future facilities. Really helpful tool, and I think it's clear, I think it's clear to non-planners, you know? It's a map that those of us who aren't in the weeds of development can still understand. And I think the public will be able to understand it. I liked it a lot. Regarding the Cordova Shooting Center meeting, I will echo that I loved seeing all the involvement with the public coming to that meeting. I got a little nervous somewhere in the middle of that meeting. It seemed to get a little heated. However, by the end of the meeting, I was really heartened by the fact that people began to understand that this is not a question of you either get a pool or a Shooting Center. That's simply not the issue. And people were saying, we need to find a way to do both. And whether or not we are able to move forward with renewing that lease or in finding other options for that lease or that property, people began to understand that it's never, either you get your way or I get my way. There's ways of working together. So I thought that was a great outcome of that meeting, frankly. And then though Director or Secretary Yearwood didn't mention it, he and I both attended the luau on June 17th at the Lincoln Park Neil Orchard Senior Center, which was just a lovely evening and fun with the hula dancers and the music and the food and, oh, and Brian? Yeah, I think we got video on you, buddy.
I do.
We'll be seeing you for a little hush money after the meeting. So I will end it at that point. And so at this time, we're going to move on to Item H2. And would you like to read the item?
Sure. Item H2A is to appoint two directors to the Ad-Hoc Committee for the Annual Evaluation of the District Administrator. And I'll turn it over to Chair Lamack.
Going to appoint an ad hoc committee at this time. I want to clarify that this is not an ad hoc committee that is going to evaluate or present a preliminary evaluation of the District Administrator. The evaluation of the District Administrator involves all five members of this board. However, I am going to form an ad hoc committee to pull together the form and things of that sort and get it ready for the whole board. And so what I would like to do is appoint myself to this ad hoc committee as well as Director Sloan. And then it also calls for a staff member to be appointed to this ad hoc committee, and I would like it to be our HR Manager Andrea White, if you would be so kind, as to agree to.
Absolutely.
Assist us. Okay?
Be happy to.
Okay. So unless anyone has any questions about that item, we are going to move on to Item I, Comments by Staff on Non-Agenda Items.
Okay, I'm just going to give some highlights of our monthly report. I too attended the CARPD conference and attended sessions on CalPERS legislative updates as well as staff and board relations, which I found really helpful, and I agree with Director Sloan. It was nice to see administrators in a more, smaller setting so you could really have some more deep conversations about what's going on and get some advice. I'm the new kid on the block, so it was kind of nice to see some veteran administrators with some advice that they gave me, which was great. Let's see, we have, we've worked really hard. Matt and I have been on the phone and trying to find a way for us to fund the pool. And so we are still working with, we're working with the same group that had come forward about two years ago, I had as a finance plan, as a broker. We are looking at our revenue resources in order for us to figure out a 15-to, well, 10, 15, or 20-year finance plan. With interest rates being low right now, it might be the exact time for us to really move on this project. We're optimistic as to what we've found out so far, and we will do everything we can at this point to make sure that we are looking to fund this however we can. So we are optimistic. We are having some contradictory information coming back from the broker, to put it nicely, but we are pretty tenacious, so we will look for ways to do this.
How much are we looking for?
$5 million will be what we're capping because that was the price of the renovation plan that was proposed. So I want to do apples to apples to apples with potentially two different types of models to go forward. We also hosted the Visioning Workshop, so you guys have gone through that. I attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony for Leadership Rancho Cordova Project. They did the bike stands for one of several parks in, and locations in Rancho Cordova, two of which will be in, one in Hagan. It's a canoe with oars. It's a very large one, which is very nice. And then another one in Village Green, which is trees that will be planted, metal trees for bike stands to be placed in those areas. We also attended the Leadership Rancho Cordova Graduation honoring our Martine Fancia.
Fonseca.
Fancia. He's our interim park supervisor who participated in the program this year. It was great to see how much leadership training he received, and his confidence was up, and he did a really nice job presenting. So he was, it was great to be honored, have him be honored at that event. We have been working with the facility, wide facility distribution plan. We've been putting together the preliminary budget this month. And then efforts are on the way for a joint work session with the PRMD Oversight Committee to discuss Measure J going forward. It's scheduled for July 12th. Thank you to Danielle for juggling all of these dates, and you guys have been getting a lot of emails, and thank you for your flexibility in getting some really needed meetings down and on the books. We welcomed in Administrative Support Section Patty Price as our new Office Assistant, too. On May 24th, she started. She's our new person at the front desk. When you come up to the admin building, she's at the front. Very lovely lady, and she's a great help for us. We are utilizing her in a way that the management staff, if they have special projects, she can produce those very quickly. And she's also aiding with Danielle's work in terms of getting things up to speed. Danielle's also been working with making sure that the agendas and support for the Friends of Cordova Board meetings are, you know, on par with Brian Hendrix. In the Communication Division, we have about 70 Facebook, or 40 Facebook posts, 70 likes. An average reach on Facebook is 1,603. They had an Instagram contest, which closed on May 31st. Thank you for voting, for those that did. And the winner will be announced in July Board Meeting. The deadline for Measure J 2017-18 Senior Discount Applications was on May 31st. The district received about 130 applications, and they have been verified and sent to Francisco and Associates for processing. The winter and fall/winter activity guide, or Recreation Guide, planning has begun. The guide will feature new design elements such as stylized events and facility pages, and a page dedicated to the district's 60th anniversary coming up for next year. So that'll be exciting to see a new look and feel for that. We are very happy to report about the contingency plan that we're creating, about a $310,000 contingency for our support in case we have emergencies going forward. And if that isn't used, as we said, those will potentially be used for seeding a reserve in future fiscal years. We have hired a new recreation coordinator in aquatics. Suzie Patterson was selected. She had been an actual part-time person with us for years, and so it was great to see some of our part-time folks that have been with us for several years as lifeguards move up to a full-time position as a coordinator. And she's doing a fantastic job. The Recreation Superintendent Recruitment was opened on June 7th and will close on July 9th. The Parks Services Department, they hosted a Toro vehicle tour at Hagan Park. They had several district and city park staff attend. There was approximately 50, 60 folks from different agencies attending that event. Basically, Toro came out with equipment and hosted that. In return for that, we got some discounted coupons in order for us to enter into a possible lease or purchase for some new equipment. At the Neil Orchard. such as stylized events and facility pages and a page dedicated to the district's 60th anniversary coming up for next year. So that'll be exciting to see a new look and feel for that. We are very happy to report about the contingency plan that we're creating, about a $310,000 contingency for our support in case we have emergencies going forward. And if that isn't used, as we said, those will potentially be used for seeding a reserve in future fiscal years. We have hired a new Recreation Coordinator in Aquatics. Suzie Patterson was selected. She had been an actual part-time person with us for years. And so it was great to see some of our part-time folks that have been with us for several years as lifeguards move up to a full-time position as a coordinator. And she's doing a fantastic job. The Recreation Superintendent Recruitment was opened on June 7 and will close on July 9. The Parks Services Department, they hosted a Toro vehicle tour at Hagan Park. They had several district and city park staff attend. There was approximately 50, 60 folks from different agencies attending that event. Basically Toro came out with equipment and hosted that. In return for that, we got some discounted coupons in order for us to enter into a possible lease or purchase for some new equipment. At the Neil Orchard Activity Center, they had a fiesta with over 70 participants attending. They went into the yard sale this past month. It seems like such a long time ago, but they had the yard sale this past month. They rounded out the month with a day trip to Empire Mine State Historic Park in Grass Valley. They did the Great Outdoors Event, the Night Under the Stars. They had about 12 participants. It was the first year that they attended, but they had great events. They had a park ranger out there helping them with safety demonstrations. They did some arts and crafts, barbecue dinner, and the kids even went fishing, which was cool. Meet the Machines also happened. And it was the largest attendance we've seen. About 2,500 people attended and boasted the largest success for the date. They had 47 vehicles and contraptions and gadgets. The Friends of Cordova was able to raise $351 worth in donations from the Segway demonstration. The swim teams, the Marlins, have 224 swimmers, one of the largest swim teams in recent years. The cordettes are about 16, which is also at one of the largest that they've had in quite some years. Camp Cordova originally is in full swing with 66 campers starting off as of week two. The enrollment has been increasing since we've added our new supervisor, Brandy Dion, as well as a new part-time teen coordinator. Her name is Angie Penna. I think that's her last name, Penna, right? Oh, good. She came on and we took our teen camp from two participants. And she's been there a week and she brought it up to 19. And so she's amazing. And those camps are all in full swing. We've worked on the master plan. We're working on the pool project. And the managers have been working on the CIP program. Also listed in this report is an update on the grants. We discussed them a little bit in the preliminary budget, so I won't repeat that. But we're really happy to report that the city was able to grant us some money for the park horse at the senior center. Here in Landing Park, just an update. The estimated completion month for construction is in August. The estimated opening month after the required maintenance period is in November. The contractor is completing playground and splash pad installations and finishing grading as required for removal of any cobbles in preparation for seeding. The Hagan Red Barn, construction on the accessible improvements and electrical work for Hagan Barn was completed. The kiosk was installed with Girl Scout Troops 3922 on June 10. And that was a great success. And thanks to John Bionda, who was out there supporting those girls and getting that kiosk installed in concrete. And they learned some construction skills. And with that, that's the end of my report.
I just wanted to tell Laura in Planning, I noticed that the Neil Orchard Senior Center was going for a kiln and its 3,500 was what was needed, was being asked, but that we did not receive any funding for it. I was thinking that for that amount, maybe we can approach the other civic organizations, like the Rotarians, maybe. They tend to sometimes give grants out for that. I strongly suggest that we see if and when they have their grant time, or the Kiwanis, or other civic organizations. Because that might, we might be able to partner with them and not only get their monetary assistance, but maybe even their own, get them to help participate and, you know, in our senior center with our setting there. Just wanted to give you that as a possibility.
Yeah, we'll definitely look into that as another funding source. We're always open to finding new money for our projects.
Yeah. And it gives us opportunity to have more relationships with partners.
Yeah, great.
That's all.
Any other comments? I just had quickly, under the Finance Department, we're talking about a contingency and reserve fund of $310,000. And I know under the way we have to see these individual budgets, Matt, just is there a way we can see that number? Or is it always going to be split up into seven or eight different chunks?
As far as being in the individual funds?
They have to be chunks.
What do you mean? How would you like to see it?
Well, you know, I look at the report and say, "Okay, where do I see this $310,000?" Well, I don't, I don't see $310,000. But I know you have to account for all the separate budgets. So I'm sure it's there, but I just wish there was a way we could see it.
Yeah. So it's going to be in that account, 2899. It'll be budget with those amounts, totaling 310. And so our goal is that the actual expenses do not hit that account. And so that account remains blank. And then that remaining balance in the twenties account is exceeding that amount. So hopefully that, not only the contingency fund, it's part of reserves, but even further of other expenses that we didn't reach.
So you're talking about looking for that account. When we get our financial report every month, it's...
Yeah, it'll be a 2899 line item.
Okay. That's great.
Right. So hopefully it'll, $310,000 is district-wide. And hopefully in actual, it says zero. And if it doesn't, that's when we'll report out exactly what we did with it.
No, lovely. Thank you. And then the last little comment I have is about the Toro demonstration. And I know that we're getting some consideration for that in the form of coupons. And I'm assuming these are coupons for equipment we already intended to purchase. So it ends up, you know...
We have quite a lot of things that we need to repurchase. The life cycle of a lot of the equipment needs to be replaced. And so the Toro demonstration allowed us to see the types of equipment that we need. And by hosting, we were offered a pretty considerate discount for doing that. Yeah. So it was worth our time and efforts. It as well allowed other park districts and cities to come out to Hagan Park and really bond and talk about their issues with their existing equipment and what their struggles are. So it was a good benefit for the staff. I think, Horacio, did you attend that event?
Good evening. Horacio, Park Services Supervisor. Yes. And it was a good time to talk to other agencies about, you know, our line of duty and kind of create new relationships, as well as we tested the equipment that we're, like you pointed out, it's equipment that we're going to purchase. I'll give you an example. One of those small carp vehicles that you use in a park, they're giving us a $1,000 incentive to purchase one. So, you know, considering that they're in the range of, you know, $10,000 and under, that is a good discount. That's a, you know, at least a 10%, discount. So it was definitely worth having them. In addition to that, they're only putting about 20 of those shows in the whole nation. So we're pretty fortunate to kind of share our area with theirs. So it's a nationwide show.
How did we get them? Did they approach us?
Jerry's amazing.
Jerry? Jerry, I knew it. Jerry is...
Everyone knows Jerry. Jerry's pretty amazing. So he was the one who tapped into that resource.
Very good. That's what he's supposed to be doing.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So now we move on to item J, Communications.
Thank you, Chair Lineback. Item J1 is Correspondence Articles on Public Outreach. We'd like to draw attention to the job announcement flyer for the Recreation Superintendent. Also, we received wonderful customer comments for the Great Outdoors Event, which was the first time we've held this event. So that was nice to hear. And then you can see the other articles, design work pieces, and newsletter attached.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions by the board on these items? Okay. So item K, Future Agenda Items, Meetings and Events Calendar.
Yes, Chair Lineback. We have item K1, which is the regular board meeting of July 19. And we have the carryover item from May 17, which is the Cordova Shooting Center concessionaire contract.
And item K2?
Yes. Item K2 is the Board and Administration Calendar. I did want to point out that I have included the Anatolia HOA meeting information per Director Sloan's request. So that is now on the calendar.
However, it's only open to members.
All right. And so I think now we're going to move on to item L, Closed Session.
Thank you, Chair Lineback. Item L1 is Public Employee Performance Evaluation pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957. The title is District Administrator.
Okay. So we are going into closed session at 9:31 PM.